Good evening. Welcome to the June 25th, 2019 Meeting of the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders. We're going to begin with our conference agenda and the role calls.
Freeholders Hopter, Best, here, Duffy, here, James, LaFour, Deputy Director Lazaro, Director Bartlett, here.
I'll pass it over to our Administrator, with you know, for the Administrator's question.
Thank you, Director. First on the conference agenda this evening is always a bittersweet moment, but Karen Sisco, as you all know, has run Camp Hope for the last 36 years, and she has chosen to retire, become a quitter, Mrs. Karen, I don't know, 36 years. But we wanted to take this opportunity, and I know Karen didn't want us to do this, but we really have to do this, and I'm thrilled to call upon Karen Sisco to come to the podium. Karen, Freeholder Duffy, who is a member of the Camp Hope Commission, is going to present you with a proclamation honoring your 36 years of service to the children of Camp Hope, the seniors of Camp Hope, and the residents of Passaic County. And on behalf of the Administration, Karen, I thank you so much for all that you have done for me in helping me and the other departments be as successful as we can, as we have been. So I thank you from the bottom of our heart, and you will certainly be missed, and I know you're not going far, so we may be calling, but I want to thank you so much personally.
Yes, congratulations. It is indeed an honor for me to be able to read as I served on Camp Hope since I've been here, and I've watched it grow, a little time I was here, and watched Karen work and work so hard, and she put her life into Camp Hope, and will not be forgotten. So let me read this to you. Whereas the Board of Chosen Freeholders of Passaic County has a desire to recognize Karen Sisco upon her retiring as the Executive Director of Camp Hope. And whereas Karen Sisco began her employment at Camp Hope in 1983 as a member of the anti-suicide team since Westmoreford Township had the highest rate of teenage suicides in the United States. She obtained summer program back serving under the service of the Passaic County in 1986. And whereas Karen Sisco was appointed Executive Director of Camp Hope in 1990, where she worked closely with the membership of the Camp Hope Commission to ensure the safe and memorable time for the children who attended the county facilities throughout the summer months. Whereas, under the leadership of Karen Sisco, the campground grew from 50 acres to 62 acres in a small island which is located in Greenwood, CA. Seven cabins have been rehabilitated, 32 by 90 outdoor pavilion was erected, unsafe structures were demolished, new infirmary rooms built, and miniature golf course was added, a new pool and spray park was designed, hundreds of trees were planted, the Vincent Olivo County Office was built, and many other improvements were accomplished. Whereas, during her tenure, Karen Sisco oversaw the Camp Hope Summer Program, drove by leaps and bounds, bringing in 50,000, 57,000 children in the summer months. The Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, Passaic County Shows, the forming Explorers Camps, religious retreats, picnics, craft showers, shows, Special Association for Children's Sun Saturday enrichment programs, demonstrations, county picnics, embarrass other programs. And when we get to report at the end of the year, she's always willing to say, "No interest." No interest. Very proud of her. And I know Vince Olivo is here in spirit, because we all know about Vince Olivo. So whereas Karen Sisco is max maintained the highest safety record for the campers and counselors that have attended Camp Hope. She has served as liaison for the county through schools, churches, children's groups, and agencies throughout Passaic County. And whereas Karen Sisco is sitting and establishing the county, the Passaic County Senior Program Camp Hope in 91, since that time, over 87,000 senior citizens have enjoyed a day of activities at Camp Hope, and bus excursions with their Camp Hope buses. And maybe even another bus. Whereas Karen Sisco developed a friendship and meaningful working relationship with the Tilton family, Judith Tilton and her son Stephen, and the Schumacher Chevrolet family, who were motivation into creating Kid Give Kids Hope Foundation, quote. And through this foundation, over $285,000 of improvements have been made to Camp Hope, including state-of-the-art outdoor basketball court, new pool heater, new yards and grass, plus with campers, the David Harris Sneaker Shack, and so much more. Whereas Karen Sisco served as a member of the Wantacoo First Aid Squad for more than 40 years, which she's credited with delivering one baby in 10 CPR saves. She has served as its President, Secretary of Treasure, Assistant Treasure, Captain, First Lieutenant, Second Lieutenant, Trustee Lead. Thank you, Bajah. She has also served as a Wantacoo Councilwoman for three years, and why would you want to do that? That is an active life member, an organization for medical profession. It's my favorite part. It's like a wizard's box. And now therefore, we proclaim that the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic publicly acknowledges and congratulates Karen Sisco as a fitting tribute to the significant contribution she has made and the common effort, energy, in which she has unsuffisely devoted to the citizens of the County of Passaic. We further proclaim that this Board, which is Karen Sisco's continuing help, happiness, and success in her future endeavors. Thank you so much for being here.
I can't do that tonight, because I'll break down in tears. So there's no way. I will always be a part of Camp Hope. And I appreciate knowing everybody that I've come across with, from Under Sheriff RJ Adriano and Alisona back in the day, Mike Taylor, Janice DeJohn, and Charlene Guggio, and Tommy Rosner, and George Rauw, and just so, so many people, Andrew Thompson. These people are the people who won the county for the hidden gems that are located in the background. They're the ones that make everything click. So, on behalf of them, thank you.
Karen, I also want to send a regards from Stephen Sultan. We invited him here this evening. He couldn't make it, but he wanted to be sure to congratulate you in retirement, and thank you for all of your years of service. So on behalf of the Tiltons' family, I agree to those regards.
I'd say.
Karen.
Good pleasure. Congratulations. You've well deserved. All right, Janice, where's Janice? Oh, you sang. That's a lot.
Thank you.
Good evening, Freeholders, and thank you for having us. As you know, Passaic County Housing Agency is a member of New Jersey NARA, which is the New Jersey chapter of the Housing Redevelopment Officials. And probably my most favorite part of being a part of that organization is the fact that they want to benefit the education of young children throughout the state that provide them scholarships. And they've given out over $112,000 in scholarships over the last five years. So I'm happy tonight to be part of this presentation to a Passaic County resident, Angelica Postro, who won an $8,000 scholarship. Angelica was on the high honor roll. She was also on varsity lacrosse, volleyball, and she was an international student ambassador. She also found the time to intern at New Hope Community Ministries, which, if you don't know, is a great organization that mentors and counsels people of all ages within the community. And during high school, she also went on to mission trips, one to Mexico and one to Guatemala, right? And she helped build a school. And it was there that she realized she loved working with children. So she's going to pursue that passion by studying to become a teacher at Liberty College in Virginia. I would a little remiss not to mention Angelica's mom. Although I don't know Angelica, I do know her mom, Marjorie, sitting over there. And Marjorie's a woman I admire. She's heavily involved with our Family Self-Sufficiency Program. She came here from Costa Rica 14 years ago, a little against her will, she told me, it was more her husband's idea. She didn't speak English, and she took ESL classes at New Hope, and now she's teaching the classes at New Hope. And she's also employed as an early childhood development teacher. So it sounds to me that Angelica is following in her mom's footsteps, which is a great path to follow. Congratulations, Angelica. I'd like to introduce Victor Sorilla now, he's the President in New Jersey NARA, to say a few words and present Angelica with her scholarship.
Thank you very much, Janice. And Board members, I thank you for having us here, and I won't take too much of your time. I think that Janice did a good job explaining why, you know, this is such a special occasion. As housing folks, we represent over 140,000 families throughout the state of New Jersey that receive our assistance, right? That comes from Congress. And part of being a member of New Jersey NARA, as she said, one of the best parts is being able to extend these scholarships and being able to see or develop self-sufficiency and seeing folks that reach their ultimate potential. So it's a pleasure for me to be here, and thank you for having us. And Angelica, congratulations, what a story. She forgot to mention she's also a student athlete. So in addition to all those activities and helping out during the ESL classes by taking care of children, Angelica is also a lacrosse and volleyball player in her spare time. So you have a very special citizen today, and it's our pleasure to be able to extend an $8,000 scholarship for her.
Good afternoon. I would just like to start by saying thank you to the committee for giving me this amazing opportunity. College is not an easy process, and a lot of you know it's not cheap either. So being able to receive this scholarship will help me so much and will help me pursue exactly what they mentioned, which is being a teacher and helping nurture those kids that needed so much to become the person that they really need to be. I would also like to thank my family and supporters for never leaving my side and believing me even when I didn't. I would not be where I am without them, and obviously without the help of the committee. They have helped me achieve my dreams when it seemed like it wasn't very possible, but with hard work, determination, and a little bit of love, it goes a very long way. So I will forever be thankful for this opportunity, and I will carry it in my heart as I continue with my education and my future. Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is a presentation declaring June 20th as World Refugee Day. The Rail Department will be making the presentation. I know there are members here that will accept.
Thank you very much, Anthony. Yeah, I'd like to welcome folks from JIRA, North Jersey Interface Cares, and the Wayne YMC, and of course, the whole JIRA team. So as Angelica's story was a nice reminder of, here in Passaic County, we're part of a much wider world, and people with all kinds of struggles. And with that in mind, this Board has from time to time talked about issues like refugees, like the struggle of immigrant communities to get by in difficult times. And we're very, very fortunate in Passaic County to have a group of nonprofit organizations that do important work in that space. Last Thursday was World Refugee Day, and the suggestion of Sekhanda Khan and the entire team that we see up here, we wanted to take a moment to recognize the issue of refugees, the issue that, of course, for in so many other ways, is in the news right now, of people who are struggling to survive and to seek opportunity in the world today. So with that, I just want to read this and present it to the folks that are here with us. Whereas the Office of the United Nations High Commissioner for Refugees, UNHCR, reports that there are more refugees in the world today than at any time since World War II, and that half the world's refugees are children. And whereas the UNHCR has determined that 1.2 billion refugees fleeing terror, persecution, armed conflicts, and human rights abuses in Africa, the Middle East, Southeast Asia, Central America, and other regions are in need of immediate resettlement. And whereas these refugees include torture survivors, people with severe medical conditions, LGBTIQ individuals, orphaned children, and women at risk of gender-based violence, all of whom cannot return to their homeland and cannot stay in their host country due to extreme vulnerability. And whereas Embassy International reports that more than half of the world's refugees are hosted by only 10 countries, and many of those countries do not have adequate resources to keep refugees fed, housed, or safe, leaving some refugees to survive on less than 50 cents a day. And whereas the rights of refugees, including the right to seek asylum, was incorporated into international law following the atrocities of World War II, which left as many as 20 million Europeans displaced. And the US Congress adopted key provisions of the Geneva Refugee Convention, including the international definition of a refugee into United States immigration law when it passed the Refugee Act of 1980. And whereas the acceptance and resettlement of refugees and asylees reflects America's finest values and strengthens global security. And whereas, once they settle in the United States, refugees contribute to their communities by starting businesses, paying taxes, and sharing their cultural traditions. And whereas Passaic County has been and continues to be a welcoming home to a diverse population of refugees and immigrants who adds to the economic strength and cultural richness of our county and this state. And whereas numerous organizations in Passaic County, including Global Emergency Response and Assistance, North Jersey Interface Cares, and the Wayne YMCA are working together with translators, volunteer teachers, and lawyers, and government officials to provide humanitarian assistance to approximately 50 families, including almost 100 children, by equipping them with job-ready English skills, assisting them with basic needs, and helping them access education, social services, mental health assistance, and employment. Whereas these new residents are workers, students, entrepreneurs, parents, neighbors, and community leaders who contribute more than they consume in state-funded services, including schooling and healthcare. And whereas, given the unbelievable hardships that they have experienced and their importance as residents of Passaic County, it is fitting and proper for this county to call attention to the continuing plight of refugees worldwide, and the importance of the work being done by local organizations in support of those refugees who live among us. Now therefore, we have proclaimed that the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic joins the state of New Jersey and numerous other local governments to declare June 20th as World Refugee Day. And we have further proclaimed that the Board of Chosen Freeholders commends JIRA, NJIC, the Wayne YMCA, and all the individual volunteers whose work serves to heal refugees' wounds, and welcome them and integrate them into the rich mosaic of peoples and cultures that make up our county and our nation. Sekhanda?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Freeholders, for recognizing this month as World Refugee Day. I grew up with my grandfather, and one of the things that he told me as growing up, he said, "You can't really tell the true nature of an individual unless you work with him, live with him, or do business with him." And I worked with this board for more than four years with this Freeholder Board, and they were always there, not only for me, but each resident of this county. And every single issue that came before this board, this Freeholder Board addressed it. And I've been with the Freeholder Board since I was in high school as a volunteer, and then started working for Freeholder Farley, and Freeholder Sandra Lazaro, and for Freeholder Bruce James. So I want to thank you for recognizing this day and always being there for all the residents of Passaic County. I'm going to pass it to Valeria, who will make a quick statement, and then pass it on to NJIC and Wayne YMCA. And without the partnership of Passaic County Freeholders, NJIC, and the Wayne YMCA, you know, we wouldn't have accomplished what we have accomplished. In 2016, when we first started receiving refugees, we did a winterization drive at the Hamilton Club, and this phone over here was off the hook. We have received over $10,000 in donation through the Passaic County residents in less than a week, and we've received more blankets, shoes, and coats. We didn't even know what to do with it. And every single family in Passaic County walked out of that Hamilton Club with a big bucket of shoes and blankets and everything that they needed to have the basic necessity to live their day-to-day life. Thank you.
I'm delighted that Passaic County has chosen to recognize World Refugee Day, and I'm thankful for the recognition of JIRA and our other partners in the fight to promote refugee rights. The mission statement of JIRA highlights the importance of promoting human rights and dignity, and it's important to showcase, to create laws and policies that showcase the inherent dignity and rights of human beings, no matter where they come from. And I'm in awe to know elected officials who are working to promote the rights and dignities of all people, including recognizing World Refugee Day and passing laws and promoting events that benefit all people. Thank you.
I'd just like to add my voice in thanking the Board for its continued support as we try in some small way at the local levels to provide some measure of justice to the victims of injustice. Thank you.
Thank you. And as a representative of the Wayne YMCA, I just wanted to thank everybody for the support that you're providing in making sure that we have a welcoming place for all. YMCA has really put a stake in the ground in terms of making sure our doors are open to everybody, and it's nice to know that we've got support from so many individual nonprofit organizations, and most importantly, government. Continue to do what you're doing. We'll continue to do what we're doing. We will make this world a better place. Thank you.
All right, and then finally on the agenda this evening is our presentation of the 2019 Passaic County Open Space and Historic Preservation Trust Fund Proposed Grant Awards. We have Kathleen Perrin, who's our Open Space Coordinator. I know Kelly Refill left early, she wasn't feeling well, so I think you're going to get the historic portion as well. And we also have Michael Ciparros, who is our director of the ICM. Go ahead. Thank you.
So tonight, I'll be presenting the committee's recommendations, including two that Kelly reviewed. These are awards that do not require a public hearing, they are less than $100,000. First one, this is tennis court rehabilitation. Basically, it's a complete overhaul of the tennis courts at the Walrus Suburban Corporation of Passaic. The recommendation is $99,000. The Highlands Natural Pool is an ongoing project. This is Gem up in the borough of Rainwood. It's a public pool, people can go there and cool off in the summer. They are requiring funds to continue to fix the spillway at the dam and also to add a few amenities. The recommendation is $14,390. Next is the Friends of Wallish, which is a homestead in the township of Westmoreford. The Friends of Wallish Homestead have applied for funding. Again, this is one that Kelly had reviewed because it is his project. They are looking to repair the electrical system, repair or replace windows, doors, and then paint to bring those things up to a more presentable fashion. The recommendation is $29,473. Next is Halden. The borough of Halden has applied for the Tilt Street restroom and storage facility. This is diagonally across the road from the Belmont Town Square Park, which was funded by the Freeholders over, I think it was 2015 and 2016. This will allow them, it's a vacant lot, it will allow them to put in much-needed restrooms as well as a storage facility for amenities that are used at the park, such as tables, the holiday tree, et cetera. The recommendation for this project is $99,000. Next is the New Weiss Center. The Freeholders may recall that this was called the Weiss Ecology Center when it was owned by the New Jersey Autobahn several years ago. They turned it over to this new organization, Highlands Nature Friends, and they had come to the county to ask for a needs assessment with the county dig fund. These improvements, these are ongoing improvements, and these were identified in that needs assessment. The recommendation is for $52,993. Next is the New Jersey Community Development Corporation. Their headquarters at the Rogers Locomotive Building. Again, this is one that Kelly Refill had reviewed. This is for windows. The windows are deteriorating, and they have a match from the NJCC itself, as well as the Jersey Historic Trust. The recommendation for this project is $50,000.
Basically, it's a complete overhaul of the tennis courts at the Walters Suburban Corporation of Passaic. The recommendation is ninety-nine thousand dollars. The Highlands Natural Pool is an ongoing project. This is Gem up in the borough of Rainwood. It's a public pool. People can go there and cool off in the summer. They are requiring funds to continue to fix the spillway at the dam and also to add a few amenities. The recommendation is fourteen thousand thirty-nine dollars. Next is the Friends of Wallish, which is a homestead in the township of Westonorf. The Friends of Wallish Homestead have applied for funding. Again, this is one that Kelly had reviewed because it is his project. They are looking to repair the electrical system, repair or replace windows, doors, and then paint to bring these things up to a more presentable fashion. The recommendation is twenty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars. Next is Halden. The borough of Halden has applied for the Tilt Street Restroom and Storage Facility. This is diagonally across the road from the Belmont Town Square Park, which was funded by the Freeholders over the, I think it was 2015 and 2016. This will allow them, it's a vacant lot, it will allow them to put in much-needed restrooms as well as a storage facility for amenities that are used at the park, such as tables, the holiday tree, et cetera. The recommendation for this project is ninety-nine thousand dollars. Next is the New Weiss Center. The Freeholders may recall that this was, this was called the Weiss Ecology Center when it was owned by the New Jersey Autobahn. Several years ago, they turned it over to this new organization, Highlands Nature Friends, and they, they had come to the county to ask for a needs assessment with the county Digg Fund. These improvements, these are ongoing improvements, and these were identified in that needs assessment. The recommendation is for fifty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. Next is the New Jersey Community Development Corporation. Their headquarters at the Rogers Locomotive Building. Again, this is one that Kelly Ruffel had reviewed. This is for windows. The windows are deteriorating, and they have a match from the NJCDC itself, as well as the New Jersey Historic Trust. The recommendation for this project is fifty thousand dollars. Highland Playground. This is a project that was funded last year to put in new playground equipment. This year, they're asking for the pervious mulch that was installed at Yon's Pond over a few years ago by the Freeholders. It's a pervious rubber mulch. It's kind of the, you know, state-of-the-art for children's playgrounds. The recommendation is for fifty thousand dollars. City of Passaic has applied for the Palasian Park Improvement Project. This is a huge project. It's also part of a multi-park project that they've applied to Green Acres for funding. This particular project would upgrade the parking lot, the field, resurface the walking path, and replace the lighting. The recommendation this year is for ninety-nine thousand dollars. Patterson Habitat for Humanity has partnered with the City of Patterson and twenty-two other organizations to create the Reverend Dr. Morton Luther King Park, which is at the corner of Auburn Street and Governor Street in the City of Patterson. Bethel Amy Church was directly across the street. It's the last place that Dr. King preached in the State of New Jersey before his assassination. And this will go toward putting in pavers that are going to be inspired with his quotes. You'll see in, on the presentation, there's a statue. The artist is donating the statue, which is huge. There will be chess tables, and it's also a green project. They're installing a rain garden and other amenities. The recommendation for this project is ninety-four thousand dollars and sixty, ninety-four thousand sixty-six dollars. Next is Hoxter Park in the borough of Prospect Park. This is an ongoing project. Last year, they received some funding for this soccer field. It's to be installed at the site of a little-used baseball field. They are showing a match quite significant from the State of New Jersey Green Acres Program. The recommendation this year is for fifty thousand dollars. In the borough of Wannacue Lakeside Park, this is a neighborhood park along the banks of Rainbow Lake. Needs a lot of upgrades, basketball court, new playground equipment, and they have a match from their own Open Space Trust Fund, and the recommendation is ninety-nine thousand dollars for this project. The Wayne Lilly has applied for additional improvements to Dr. Witchfield and facility. As you now see, it's been funded several times over the past few years, and the recommendation this year is for fifty thousand dollars. Finally, Woodland Park, the Diane Grimes Memorial Park. This is the first time we're seeing this particular park. They would like to upgrade the children's playground equipment and add some amenities such as signage and trash receptables, benches, et cetera. They do have seventy thousand dollars in local Open Space funding, and the recommendation is for twenty-five thousand dollars this year. Total recommendations for funding these projects that do not require a public hearing is eight hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars. Are there any questions?
I have one. The, and we're all project, and I want to thank you for your time. The projects that are, that are funding nonprofits, who maintains the property after that, after it's built?
They have to have a memoriable understanding if it's a city-owned parcel. If they, they own the parcel, then they take care of it.
Okay, Kathleen, I want to thank you and, I just wanted to, I have another question. I just wanted to thank Kathleen as a Freehold Representative on the Open Space Board after the last few years. Just very long and grateful to work on these projects. We always have way more applications of good funds, so a lot of difficult choices have to be made, and we have, we're very lucky to have, you know, each municipality, I think, in this county is really actively involved with their parks and wanting to see them improve and taking advantage of these open space funds, as well as nonprofits that are trying to maintain historical and active parks. I want to thank Kathleen and her staff, as well as our Deputy Administrator Matt Jordan, who's at the committee, and Kelly, who was in here today. But great work that's done by our staff and the Open Space Committee that we've put together. Thank you.
Again, thank you for the opportunity. I'm happy to do that.
That concludes my portion of the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Captain, and Mr. President. So that goes with your review of our consent agenda, N one through N sixty-four. Any questions?
If I could, Chief Director, I just want to point out two resolutions, three resolutions if I could. One, the re-. Fifth term, it seems like yesterday. Is number two on the agenda, and very excited about that. And also, we have charity, Arvin Takis, who will be appointed with your votes this evening as our new purchasing agent. So. Number two and three on the agenda. Number six on the agenda is the acceptance of our annual audit. And I want to commend our CFO, Rich Cahill. We have one, what I would consider a minor comment. Sometimes orders don't like to get you, get away with nothing, so they find something. But it's one minor audit, which is a far cry from when Rich walked in the door. But I want to thank Rich and his entire staff in finance for a really terrific audit and a job well done. And also, with that being said, there's an affidavit that each Freeholder has to sign that Mr. Unk is going to have. So if you could sign that, it must be accompanied with the audit, as we want to see. You have to read the comments and recommendations, which was very short since there was one. So thank you.
Read it or not, you have to swear that you did. With that, counsel, are there any they serve?
Yes, there is, Mr. Director. We would ask, I hope to ask that we also submit amendment to N four. N four was a water hardware bid. It was actually a rebid rather than a regular bid, so it is just a very minor change, and I would ask that that be permitted. We also have one late starter that just came in. This is a resolution declaring Northeast Remsco Construction in default of its contract for the replacement of the Westbrook Bridge over the Wannacue Reservoir Structure Number sixteen-hundred-four-ninety-one between the boroughs of Rainwood and Wannacue. Very briefly, this was requested by the county engineer. There's one aspect of the project that remains undone, and so far Northeast Remsco has not agreed to do it. So county engineers asked that the board have permission to declare the contract in default, and if we can't get them to come back, then we will hit the surety bond. So I would ask that that be put on as N sixty-five.
Any need for a second?
No, sir.
Before we adjourn the conference agenda, is there anything else?
No.
Then I attempt a motion to adjourn the conference.
Freeholders, after.
Yes.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazzara.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes.
That brings us to the regular meeting of Passaic County Chosen Freeholders for June eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. Lou, do you want to start?
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted to reorganization meeting filed with county clerk posted in administration building mail to two mules per person courts for the provisions of the laws.
Freeholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Here.
On the floor.
Here.
Deputy Director Lazzara.
Here.
Director Bartlett.
Please rise to the indication, please. In a moment's time.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power, rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our Freeholders, and the County of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
We strongly pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Speak in standing before a moment's time, to remember all the men and women who have died while serving the United States armed forces, as well as to remember Antoinette Batavia, former borough administrator and clerk of the county of Westonorf in the past days.
Motion to adjourn to June eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. Freeholders, after.
Best.
Jane.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazzara.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes.
I have a motion to suspend the regular order of business. Second. Okay. Freeholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazzara.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes.
I have a motion to suspend the regular order of business. Second. Okay. Freeholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazzara.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes.
Yep. County Guarantee Ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash oh six, an ordinance authorizing the guarantee by the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, of lease purchase obligations of the Passaic County Improvement Authority in aggregate principal amount not to exceed twelve million one hundred and twenty-six thousand, and consenting to the such financing and determining certain other matters in connection therewith. Thank you very much. I have a motion to open the public hearing on Guarantee Ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash oh six. Second. Freeholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
James.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazzara.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes.
So this is not the general public portion? This is the portion where the public has something to say about this guarantee ordinance now at the time? Does anyone present desire to be heard on Guarantee Ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash oh six?
See, no one's opposed to move to close public portion.
Second. So Freeholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazzara.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes.
I have a motion to adopt Guarantee Ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash oh six. Second. Made by James. So by Lazzara.
Yes.
After, seconded by after. Freeholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazzara.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes.
I have a motion to resume the regular order of business. Second. Yes, you have. Freeholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazzara.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes.
Freeholder report. I'm going to ask.
We just have more of a bill of, 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 of,
of the community development block grant from the City of Visage until September 2019. So we agree that authorizing a resolution to approve a no course extension. The same for the small given one, which handles.
Happy graduation, class of 2019. A lot of graduations throughout the County of Visage. High school, State County Community College, even preschool today. My son graduated preschool. And excellent college, right? Preschool college? That'd be nice.
Thank you, Director. I have eight items on the agenda today on the Board of Public Safety Committee for freeholder's consideration. But I would like to point out one in particular, seeing that the good Mayor of Patterson is in attendance here. And that would be N56. It'll be a resolution authorizing the State County Sheriff's to execute a MOU between Patterson Fire Department and the State County Sheriff's Department regarding the CSCAM arc to the system usage. One of the primary reasons why I believe this is a good agreement. It'll benefit both the Sheriff's Department and the City of Patterson Fire Department in the use of trying to locate underwater recovery. We will, the agreement calls for storing one of the units, Patterson Fire, and to be deployed by Patterson Fire because of their location and it saves time for the Sheriff's Department in the event of an emergency.
What does that do? I don't know what that is.
It locates if someone's underwater or if they're doing a recovery of someone underwater. This is a way of identifying the areas. I don't know how it works, but in the event of a rescue, in the event they can do a rescue, this will greatly enhance the ability of both agencies to enact the recovery. I think this is another example of the county working very well with its municipalities. This is a case of the Patterson Palace.
Freeholder reports. There's no communications. It is time for the oral portion of the meeting. I have a motion to open the public voice. Freeholders, after. You can best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Before.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Anyone in the public wishing to be heard should approach the podium and sign in. You will have three minutes, and please note that your remarks will be part of the public vote.
Hi, Anne Schneckenberg, 268 Washington Ave, Clifton, New Jersey. I'm here tonight to give you a quick thumbs up to the county for incorporating recognition of the Garrett Mountain Reservation as an important bird area in your Phase Two Improvement Contract that you're awarding tonight. So nature is so important to the people of those surrounding communities here, especially in our overcrowded areas. And so therefore, on behalf of all the true lovers who reside within Visage County, particularly the lower Visage County, and all those who travel far and wide to come to Garrett Mountain, they just did this last month or so, going to see the important bird area there. Thank you.
See you all at the podium.
I'll be called worse, sir.
Don't call me sir.
Good evening, Idris Say, City of Patterson. I want to express my gratitude to the board of children, freeholders, or county administrator for a number of initiatives, primarily the guarantee resolution. We appreciate your faith in the City of Patterson. We know we're trying to turn this city around, and it's going to take a collaboration. And I have 56 freeholder board thanks to point out that MOU as well. And I want to thank you for the Ivanhoe, Eastside Park, your advocacy for those projects, because parks are a priority in my administration. Focused on Lou Costello Park, the Bear Track Park. There's a whole host of parks. Buckley Field will be cutting the ribbon this Monday. All are invited at 10:30. But I do want to elaborate on the partnership between the county and Patterson. I believe this will be unprecedented if we create a shared services committee, and we're trying to identify ways where you can assist us with certain resources, cost-saving measures, and overall, how we can improve services to all of our constituents. And Freeholder Director, I saw your post today regarding Yona. That proved positive of what partnership can produce. So again, I want to express my appreciation, Freeholder Board. Obviously, you know Patterson, I believe, is the next frontier. So I'd like everyone to make sure that we push Patterson and put it back on the map exactly where it belongs. Thank you very much.
I've been sitting here for more than 15 years. It's the first time I've represented the council, coming to express this. It's the first time in so many years. Nice to see that.
See you in the podium.
See you in the podium. Move closer to the podium. Where's my cue?
I'm struck by the negative. Freeholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Bartlet.
Yes.
I have a motion to amend N4 as described by counsel during the conference.
Freeholders, after. Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Bartlet.
Yes.
I have a motion to add N65.
Second. Seconded by Duffy. Freeholders, after. Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Bartlet.
Yes.
I have a motion to add N65.
Move it to second. Seconded by Duffy. Freeholders, after. Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
So as amended and extended, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Seconded by James. After. Lozera. Lozera, yeah. Freeholders, after.
Yes, all except N11. Up at St. John, N11.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Director Bartlet, if I could have a second to stop and thank you and all the members of the Visage County Board of Chosen Freeholders as you have entrusted me with another term as clerk to the board. As I start my fifth term on July 16, I will continue to strive to execute the duties of this office at the highest level so that you all can carry out your freeholder duties to the fullest. I would also like to thank Visage County Administrator Anthony De Nova for his continued friendship and professional and personal guidance. I want to thank the ladies in the Freeholders' Office, Lisa, Marquisha, and Jasmine, who make the freeholders and myself look outstanding each and every day. Thank you to Deputy County Administrator Matt Jordan and all the department heads who have always been responsive to me as we work on projects and events that make the Visage County Board of Chosen Freeholders to be the finest freeholder board in the State of New Jersey. I also cannot not mention my wife, Danielle, as she continues to be my North Star. Thank you all.
Danielle, hi, Duffy.
I wrote the paragraph, Duffy.
That means finally, first of all.
I had to leave because it was going to bring tears somewhere.
Redefining to you and everyone that we appointed today. So that brings us to, oh, on our agenda, new business, Kai, would you please please approve Guarantee Resolution 2019-07, which, by the way, relates to N8, the guarantee resolution that the mayor referenced in this report.
Resolution authorizing the guarantee by the County of Visage, New Jersey, of payment of principal, of, and interest on the governmental loans revenue bond anticipation notes, Series 2019. Visage County Guarantee, City of Patterson Project of the Visage County Improvement Authority in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $23,819,000.
Move it. Okay, so that was a motion to approve Guarantee Resolution 2019-07.
Freeholders, after. Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Bartlet.
Yes.
And just to mention to my colleagues in the public, that as you all know, from time to time, we guarantee debt of the City of Patterson or other municipalities. As always, we have our first resource en masse to stay due to those municipalities. So this is something where our excellent bond rating and our excellent rate to limit our municipalities at very, very low risk in the county. I have a motion on personnel.
Freeholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Freeholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second. Freeholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Before.
Yes. Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Bartlet.
Yes.